This time we have the, on the agenda approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Any corrections to that? None being, I'll prove, I'll stand to prove as they are. Public comment, in this section, we allow public comment, five minutes for anybody that would like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name. All right, moving on.
There are no petitions, memorials, or remonstrances, so item 7A, under report of the city manager, will be a presentation by Public Utilities Director Mike Muirhead on the Power Outage Management System.
Thanks, Matt. Mayor and Commissioners, good afternoon. Don't start that yet, Matt. We're gonna, I'm gonna talk.
He's gonna talk.
Okay.
I thought that was the point of this.
Well, it is. I want to, I want to give a little bit of a lead in.
Oh, all right. A build up.
You can click on the, the, okay. What you'll see here in just a few minutes is a little video we put together. Kind of walks us, it'll walk you through how our new website, our website's gonna show a new, how the management monitoring system. So, a little bit of history of where we got where we're at. This really came to light back in April of last year when we got the major ice storm, winter storm tore down trees and power lines. Initially, we had several outages within the city limits of what we serve, which was enough on its own to try to keep track of. When that occurs, let me back up just a little bit further. During, in utilities, what we do for after-hours calls, everything goes through Police Department Dispatch. So during the normal day, you can call and someone will answer the phones at Utilities or Public Works. At night, after hours, that call goes to Dispatch and then they call, and that, they contact your own call crew and they go out and will take care of what needs to be taken care of. So during this winter storm, Dispatch was trying to relay all the information like they normally do to the Utilities people, in particular Electric. And while we had the service center staff, there was people there taking calls from Dispatch, it was, it was becoming overwhelming pretty quick, just within the city. And then when the transmission system of Sunflower Electric failed and took the whole county, several counties into a blackout situation, we had, everybody in town was calling to try to figure out what was going on with the power, how it was doing. They're calling Dispatch, they're overloading Dispatch's phone system. So we transferred several of their lines to the service centers, we could pick up some of those calls. And within, I think it was like twenty-eight minutes or thirty-eight minutes, we had received over a thousand phone calls.
Oh, my God.
So, we were working with IT to try to get money to message this out through a social network, so people would know what to do. And that was working fairly well. There was a lot of people talking and sharing information. And then, just as, just prior to us restoring Sunflower, restoring Transmission Service, and then us restoring some power in Garden City, we sent the message out that if you're still without power, just call this number and let us know. We got calls from several counties, we had a ton of calls. Everybody was calling. Of course, they didn't know. So, we decided right then and there, we've got to come up with a better way to handle this. So, and working with these three, Ken, McKenzie, and Cliff, and then our census provider, who is, who we purchased our automated meter reading, our meter system from, we've devised a plan where, when the, when the electric meter, say at my house, is without power, we automatically get a signal to the service center anyway. We wanted to use that information, so we could put it up on a screen, so if I could get to the internet somewhere, I could pull this up and I could look and I could see my house was affected. So, long story short, we have put that together. And what it'll do is, it'll allow everybody that's a Garden City customer, if there's a power outage, and you're, you can get to the internet via your phone or some battery-operated computer, or if you're out of town, you'll be able to log into the city's.
Website.
Page, what am I trying to say?
Website.
Website. And click on the, it'll show you the proper things to click on. It'll take you to this outage reporting system, and you'll be able to see who's, who's out of power and who's not. And also, we're, we plan to use this to help the crews. Right now, let's say there's a power outage and we get, we get messages through our SCADA system that say, you know, "There's a problem over here, a third in the Elm Street," saying. But it doesn't, that's all it tells us. This will show us, these are all the people that's out of power, and that, that'll help us determine, okay, it's line A, line B, or line C that's failing. So it'll help us be able to restore power quicker as well, so. That's kind of how we got where we're at. This, it's kind of what actually helped to do this, IT helped us put all this together, so if Matt will now hit the play button.
I will.
It's only lasts about three minutes.
The City of Garden City has launched a new web application to help police residents inform during power outages and assist Garden City Electric crews in restoring power to neighborhoods. The Power Outage Management System can be accessed online at www.garden-city.org/poweroutages or under the Power Community tab on the site. This app gives residents real-time information regarding power outages typically caused by severe weather. If you experience an outage, you can navigate to the app on a powered-up computer or mobile device. You will be greeted by a splash screen with a little reminder instruction. You will highlight each of those fulls separately. You can zoom in and out by clicking the buttons in the top left-hand corner. If you need to move the map around, just click and drag the map with your cursor to the location you are looking for. Residents will also be able to search for address in search boxes located in the top right-hand corner. Addresses must be entered the same way they appear on city utilities. The application will offer suggestions to help make it a bit easier for your user. This process will allow you to see if your address is in one of the areas affected by The red markers on the map indicate an outage. If there is a large red circle with a number, it means there are significant number of outages in that area. If you zoom in, the circle will disperse and show you where all of the outages are located. If you click on any of the red markers, they will provide you more detailed information about that outage. The box on the bottom right is designed to give more information to residents about the outages. Each area is given a color code to help residents know which outage they are part of. If users want more information about an outage, they can click on the I, the information The information in the application may change as the outage is restored. Because the page will not automatically refresh, users are encouraged to refresh the page often. The refresh button can be found in the top right corner of the screen.
Wow, that's awesome.
It is really cool. I hope that we never have to show you a live demonstration of it, but I'm sure there'll be a time when we're gonna have a power outage. And if, if, once we get information out, we'll try to inform all the citizens that that's there and it's available. It will make it so much easier for everybody. In, in addition, it will help relieve the loading of the Garden City Dispatch, Police Department's Dispatch, if people will know, that there's no reason to call, we know you're out, we know, you know, you'll be able to see it, and so hopefully it'll be a big helpful tool. So, that's it.
But like you said, though, too, it gives, it gives the electric crews an idea, instead of just an area, it gives you which line, and that helps your crews to be more efficient than getting the repair of the lines and getting it back online, the electricity back online, as you said.
It does. You know, we have a, we didn't go into, I won't go into a whole lot of detail in more depth, but our AMI system will pick up, say, you, say you guys all live in the same neighborhood. It will tell us which meter is out, and it'll give us the number of that meter, so we're able to go back and say, well, all of these guys live within a two-block area, so therefore, if these people are out, then that effect, transformer number such and such is what runs your house. We can track that down and it's, it's pretty promising.
Well, that gives you supervisors an idea of what's going on before they even leave the house, doesn't it?
It does.
Gives them a little chance to pre-plan before they even get in their vehicle and get to moving.
You know, the on-call crews, they carry a, you know, a tablet with them. And the first thing that happens is when a breaker operates or someone calls, their phones go off with alarms, and hey, we just had this breaker operate. You'll be able to pull up on the tablet now, it'll pull this up and see exactly how big of an area it is. It'll help them determine, do we need to call in two or three more crews, or is this just a small, isolated area we can take care of? So, we're pretty excited about it. We couldn't have done it certainly without, in particular, Ken and McKenzie have worked very hard on this, as well as IT departments. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks, everybody, for all your hard work in getting this put together. Good job, guys.
I'm gonna add an item under Managers Report. I've got a, should I provide that to the chairman from the telegraph room? I'm gonna add a memorandum that I've distributed amongst, amongst all of you, and I'll just read from that. It is with sadness that I report to you the passing of Ken Strobel on January fourteenth. Ken was city attorney for the City of Dodge City for sixteen years, prior to being appointed city manager in two thousand and seven. He continued in that capacity until early two thousand and fourteen. And during his career, Ken was instrumental in the establishment, preservation, and expansion of the Central Air Service, or as you all have come to know it, EAS, to Western Kansas. He authored most of the combined responses to service proposals for the Western Kansas EAS communities, and often served as the region's spokesperson to the Federal Aviation Administration staff. When an EAS community would employ a new city manager or a new airport director, Ken graciously served as the EAS historian, and would help guide the new staff through the labyrinth of the federal program's processes and red tape. Although a fierce champion of Dodge City High School and college athletics, and full of community pride, Ken promoted regional collaboration. He was instrumental in establishing the Southwest Kansas Coalition, the lobbying group created for the cities of Dodge City, Garden City, and Liberal. He also helped craft the proposal for, and then advocate for, consolidating Garden City and Dodge City's essential air service funds to secure fifty-passenger regional jet service to Southwest Kansas. This was not an easy political position for Ken to take, but nobody knew the essential air service program better than him. His professional opinion that regional jet service out of Garden City Regional Airport was in the best interest of both communities, and would likely be the only way to preserve commercial air surface, service in the region. Coupled with the relationships of trust he had built over the years with FAA staff, leaders in other communities, and leaders within his own communities, however, eventually won the day. American Airlines flies out of Garden City Regional Airport today, sustainably servicing a broader customer base than our airports ever collectively served before, thanks in very large part to the ingenuity, resilience, and character of Ken Strobel. Most importantly, Ken was a friend and a mentor to several past and current City of Garden City staff and commissioners. We enjoyed his company at Western Kansas congressional reception trips to Washington, DC, and during regional Southwest Kansas Coalition meetings. Our thoughts and prayers are with Ken's family, and with Mayor Sowers, city manager Teeman, and the entire City of Dodge City family. Services will be held this Saturday at ten a.m. at the First United Methodist Church in Dodge City.
Thank you.
Items C through F are all staff reports, and if you have any questions on any of those, we'd be happy to try to answer those. I'm sorry, items B through F.
Any questions? None being, we'll move on.
Okay, meetings of note. Certainly, some, some things coming up. If any of these require RSVPs, please do so through C-LIN. And I think we're ready for item nine A. The appropriation ordinance, which if approved would be ordinance twenty-four fifty-one dash two thousand and eighteen A.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance twenty-four fifty-one dash two thousand and eighteen A.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second, any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, and I would like to note, I did receive some questions on the appropriation ordinance by Mr. Burns, one with respect to the, the check distribution, payroll check distribution, and when attorney's names show up, those are garnishments on the workforce. And then, also, the payment, the payments in the check register to Southwind are in relationship to the corporate benefit that they offered to the city and we had available for employees by choice through open enrollment to, they could either do payroll deduction or pay everything upfront. If they chose payroll deduction, then we would issue the check, and then they will pay us back over the course of the year. Checks that were supplied for payment in full, which was, most of the choices were given to Southwind directly. The city also purchased three of those as a compensation benefit for the credentialed golf staff, as in an attempt to build a bridge between the two courses, so. Yeah, thanks for the questions, I appreciate those. Item ten A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve lease purchase financing for police department equipment. If approved, it would be resolution number twenty-seven twenty-one dash two thousand and eighteen. And I will turn this over to Chief Hughes.
Actually, Melendez.
I'm gonna turn this over to Melinda.
Any, I guess any other substantial courtill issues or questions, we'll ask Chief about it, so.
We can go over the equipment that's included in this lease purchase, and it's in your packet. From Virtus Motors, we're, we have five Ford SUVs. Total cost on all five is a hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine ninety. The lease term is three years on it. Another purchase, Legacy Auto, which is a Dodge Durango, Investigations, twenty-six thousand, oh forty-seven, three-year lease purchase on it. And through Kansas Highway Patrol, we are getting a Dodge Ram pickup, that is for the animal patrol officer. Total cost is twenty thousand, nine thirty-two. The total lease purchase on this, on these vehicles, which were bid last November, we have to do that in advance because they have to be built. Takes about four to six months on those. So those were accepted last year. We did the lease purchase last week. We have two banks that provided interest rates for a three-year lease purchase. That was Clayton Holdings. That is actually through Commerce Bank, and also from Western State. The low bid for a three-year lease was two-point-five-four percent with Clayton. There are a number of documents that have to be signed by the mayor, so I'm asking if you do approve this, our recommendation is that you do approve it, and approve the resolution, and the approval for the mayor to sign the lease purchase document.
What's that, number?
Twenty-seven twenty-one dash two thousand and eighteen.
Mayor, I'll move to approve resolution two-seven-two-one dash two-zero-one-eight.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Item ten B.
Just by the mayor has a lot to say, so.
Item ten B is a, has a designated time, so we'll skip over that. Item eleven A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the use of remaining law enforcement center sales tax funds.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This issue was before you in July of two thousand and sixteen, some of you, to try and spend the rest of the funds that were in the LEC account. There were a number of projects that were out there, and, and we gave those to you to decide which ones to do. The city and the county commission agreed on those projects, and those projects were completed. At the end, because some of that work was actually able to be done by Finy County staff, we had ninety-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents left over. No one, up to this point, had, had come up with any projects or proposed anything to do with those funds, and so it was brought to my attention that there was a rather large project that had been done at the LEC on the HVAC systems. And so, Finy County then said, well, can we reimburse a portion of that with what's, what's left, and go ahead and close out that account? Seemed to make sense to me, that's what the funds were for, which was the LEC, and that's where the project took place. And it seemed to be a reasonable project. The invoice from three sixty engineers who completed the project is attached, so you can take a look at that. But, once you make a decision on this, the county commission will also have to, to make a decision, but I assume since county staff is proposing, I'm assuming that they'll, they'll be in favor of it, so. And then that would be the end of this, this fund, so. The alternatives are to approve using the remaining funds towards this project, deny, and leave it in there, and we can kind of go back and collaborate and see if there's any other projects out there that we might use it for, related to the LEC, or only approve a portion of it, and then ask us to go back and look at the other portion.
And then that's, that's the end of that fund entirely?
Entirely, exactly. We'll be finished with it. No more reports.
Mr. Mayor, I approve the use of the remaining funds, the LEC sales tax fund of ninety-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents, is that correct?
Yes.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Mayor and Commissioners, you're asked to consider and approve a long-term maintenance agreement between the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and the City of Garden City, and Garden City Industrial Park LLC for sludge encapsulation at the former Monford facility. Steve?
Mayor and Commissioners, this is one of the last items remaining to close out a former wastewater plant at the old packing facility that the city acquired and subsequently sold to Garden City Industrial Park. Real estate purchase agreement between the city and Garden City Industrial Park put the, split the duties of closure of those lagoons between the two parties. The city undertook the engineering report and prepared specifications, and then GCIP actually did all the work that has been done. And the last thing related to the encapsulation, two last things, is a long-term maintenance agreement, and since the city is still the permit holder for that wastewater facility, even though Garden City Industrial Park is the property owner, it's a three-party agreement between KDHE, Garden City, and GCIP. Essentially, all the duties and responsibilities from this point forward will be on GCIP. The city is out of any long-term reporting requirements or anything like that. There is a ten-thousand-dollar one-time fee paid to KDHE that we're responsible for that they will bank essentially, and then that is intended to reimburse their costs for the annual inspection of the facility to make sure it's still being maintained properly. The second item is a restrictive covenant that basically says they can't do anything to that property other than maintain it as a encapsulated sludge area, or they have to completely remove the sludge and dispose it elsewhere. And since they spent o幾 bucks moving it into a pile and covering it and getting grass to grow, the likelihood is, is nil. But should that be desirable at some point in the distant future, that would be the property owner's cost, not the city's, so.
Can they store anything on it? Or can you not use it at all?
At this stage, it's, it is basically just reserved area. If they were a hard surface, they could probably use it for ground storage, but the intent is not to disturb the area that would cause any erosion or detriment to the vegetative cover and cause any kind of problems with that area, so. A lot smaller than was originally anticipated many years ago. I think because the sludge sat in those old lagoons for so long, drying out, and once they started moving it, it got a lot smaller. There's actually a very small area in, that is encumbered by this restrictive covenant. The balance of the lagoons are being reclaimed by Garden City Industrial Park, and right now, or as, as they get them filled, are being used for more ground storage of wind turbine parts, whatever they might convert the land to in the future. So, we're asking you today to approve the three-party long-term maintenance agreement. Your other option would be to defer action to a later date. Again, we recommend approval of the long-term maintenance agreement between KDHE, the city, and Garden City Industrial Park.
I move that we approve the three-way long-term maintenance agreement.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve.
The, just one right, I guess, do we have to approve the restriction covenant, or is that part of that agreement?
No, that's, that's entirely between Garden City Industrial Park and KDHE.
Okay, just making sure.
It's just, it's just referenced in the agreement.
Okay.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and reappoint Keith Rathbun to the Garden City Recreation Commission.
Afternoon, Commissioners. So the board unanimously approved to reappoint Keith Rathbun back to the Recreation Commission. He served as a interim, took place, took somebody's, another board member that left early, so this is actually his first term by definition, and we have had no other applicants that have shown interest, so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve, appoint, reappoint Keith Rathbun to the Garden City Recreation Commission.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second, any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Thank you for reasoning that, I really appreciate it.
Item D is the consent agenda. There are no changes, so if, if nobody has any suggested items to pull off, appropriate motion would be to approve the consent agenda, items D one through three.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items D one, two, three.
There's been a, go ahead.
I'll make, I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second, any other discussion on those items? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passes.
Commissioners, there aren't any other business items until two P.M., so I think it would be appropriate to recess the meeting until two P.M.
We can, we can go to.
Unless you want to do the executive session.
That'd be a good idea.
Or we, you want to do the commission comments and then go into executive session? Or how long do we need to have the executive session?
About twenty minutes.
Yeah, let's do the executive session and then the, the comments, does that sound okay? Okay. I'll need to, I'll make the motion that the governing body go into executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two pertaining to consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. I'd like to have Attorney Grisell, Matt Allen.
Mr. Muirhead.
Mr. Muirhead.
Yes, the subject to be discussed is potential litigation.
And the subject to be discussed is potential litigation.
Mrs. Cunningham as well, too, please.
Okay, and Mrs. Cunningham as well.
Second.
Spin motion and second, any other discussion? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed, and when you need.
Until one fifty.
Until one fifty. Public hearing, questions, concerns, and comments from the public with regard to the advisability of making certain improvements and establishing an improvement district.
And I would say that we're back in open session and no binding action was taken in the executive session.
And we are back in session. After the executive session, there's no binding action. Okay. Now that I got all that said.
Right, Mayor, yeah, you read the.
I read it for you.
Ten B, so, yeah, go ahead.
All right. As stated, and we'll kind of give a little bit of background before we start the hearing. Mr. Solz has approached staff about filing the enclosed petition for a new improvement district to include all sixteen lots in the twenty-three-hundred block of Ninth Street. On November first, two thousand and seventeen, staff found a new.
On November first, twenty-seventeen, staff found a new petition sufficient for the governing body to consider the request. And on November ninth, twenty-seventeen, the governing body approved a resolution for a public hearing. The public hearing is set for today according to Kansas state statutes, and for the governing body to be able to make their findings as to the advisability for this improvement. The signed petition gives the following information on the improvement district. The estimated probable cost of such improvement is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. The proposed method of assessment is per square foot on each lot and parcel of property within the improvement district. The proposed apportionment of cost between the improvement district and the city at large is thirty percent to be assessed against the improvement districts and seventy percent to be paid by the city at large. Special assessment improvement tax districts are financial tools which allow local governments to assess additional taxes to real estate for specifically approved public improvements, like but not limited to water mains, sewer lines, and streets. Statute requires approved, approval for fifty-one percent of the real estate owners of the district in order for the governing body to take action on a petition to establish a district. The governing body has the ability to determine if the community as a whole should participate in the improvement or if the cost will be borne solely by the district, the improvement benefits. As the governing body considers the request for a city developer cost share, past practice by the city tends to fall into three categories. First, it is the development of previously undeveloped property in which case it is customary for the property owner or developer to bear one hundred percent of the cost. Second is the development of fully developed property, underdeveloped public infrastructure. Two recent examples of this are the nineteen-hundred block of A Street and the one-hundred block of North Taylor. In both of these instances, all of the properties were developed and the roads and storm drainage were unimproved. The city paid seventy percent of these improvements and adjacent properties paid the remaining thirty percent. The third category would be the oversizing of arterial roads where the city pays the equivalent of the oversize of the infrastructure. The request before the commission appears all between the first and the two descriptions as the property is neither fully developed nor fully undeveloped. There are four of the sixteen lots are developed and twelve of the sixteen lots are under, are considered underdeveloped. Therefore, there is no clear policy or past practice to call upon to form a staff recommendation. The alternatives that staff put together for your consideration is that the governing body may approve the improvement district as the proposed, as a seventy-third split. The governing body, alternative number two is the governing body may approve the improvement district at a ratio other than a seventy-thirty split. And alternative number three is the governing body may not approve the improvement district. Staff does not have a recommendation in regards to these alternatives. And the fiscal note, if the improvement district is authorized, as, as in the petition, the city's portion of the special assessment district would be a hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars for the city at large, which will be included in the twenty-nineteen general obligation bond projects with the first debt payment due in twenty-twenty. And that kind of is the project in a nutshell, and we can open it up to public comment at this time.
Hello, the public hearing? Any public comment on this issue? Please step forward and state your name.
My name is Shelley Walliger, and I actually own two of the developed lots. I have two on the north side. I can't remember which block or which block it's on. I own one and two on block A, I believe, is where I am. I have my house and my garage on those. To kind of, I know I've talked to most of you, but there are a few new faces, so to kind of give a little bit of background or a little bit of my background. Ninth Street is a dirt road. This has been part of my permanent address for my entire life. I lived across the street, and then I was lucky enough that my grandfather's house, or he previously owned the house, and I came up for sale, and I was lucky to bring it back into the family. And so, this little piece of dirt road, this little piece of Garden City has been part of my life for forty-eight years. And in that forty-eight years, I've never asked for the road to be paved. I've never asked for improvements on it. Now, we have individuals that have decided to develop the property, and as they've decided to develop the property, I've been asked to subsidize their bills for the amount of seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. I know that doesn't seem like a lot to you guys because you guys are passing million-dollar things. I couldn't believe how much you passed the last time I was here. But as a teacher, you're asking for multiple checks, monthly checks at mind. And it's about sixty-five dollars a month for ten years. The one thing is, is after these lots are developed, those that are developing the lots, those that want to have the lots developed, at that point, they're either going to pay off their taxes, their specialty taxes, with the profits they make off of selling, or they're going to pass it on to the new owners. The only people that are going to have to pay for the ten years are the old houses on a new street. Those are the only ones that are going to have to pay. And honestly, I'd like my world to stay the same, but I understand we have to progress. I don't care if the road is paved. I just don't think I should have to pay for it so other people can make money. Because at this point, I'm not going to stand to make any money off of it. My lots are developed. I'm, I'm just not going to make money off of it. And to be honest with you, I like Garden City. I don't plan on leaving, at least not for a while. Any questions? Oh, and I would like to say my mother would like to be here to talk, but she is actually at work right now and was not able to get off work. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please step forward and state your name.
Hello, my name is Michael Patillo. I own lot one on block B. I've lived there for ever been seventeen years, and I know I live on a corner lot, obviously. You're responsible for both roads. I get it, okay? My question to the board is, before the decision is made, is have I not been paying taxes for a road already? How do, how do I know that? How do I know where my, my assessment is?
We haven't approved anything.
It's labeled a road.
I know, but we haven't, there's nothing there but dirt.
But it's labeled a road on the city map.
I know, but that doesn't mean anything.
But how do I know that I'm not already being assessed and haven't been paying for that taxes already?
Because there aren't any improvements.
I already pay taxes.
But as citizens, we pay taxes to support all the roads in the community. This is what, what the question is before the commission is to add an additional, additional, I guess, I wouldn't say.
Add a road that should have already been.
Improve that, to make an improvement to that street.
To improve it to a road that should have already been there because it's already labeled on the map as a road.
Right.
So, the way I see it, even, even Mr. Souls shouldn't be paying for it to have it done because of the fact that he's already been paying taxes on those properties for X amount of years. I don't know how long his family's owned it. It's not just me. It's everybody who lives on that block has already been paying taxes. Towards a road that, that's labeled on the map.
Right, but we've done, we've done this process before in other streets in our community to improve those streets from dirt streets into paved avenues. So, this is the process that we're going through.
Okay. So, at that point, who decided not to make the, when that area was being developed, who said, "Let's not make that a road"? Who said, "Let's not develop that road"? Even though we're going to label it a road, but we're not going to, we're not going to do anything to it.
Well, point of clarification, regardless of the surface, the, what's on the map is the right way, and there's a road there. It's not an asphalt road. It's not a concrete road, but it is a road.
So, is it fair?
It's a right, I'll, I'm going to answer the three or four questions that you've asked so far. At the end of that, then you can ask some more to the commission order me. The, the values of the properties along that, along that block are appraised. So, there's, there's two parts of property tax. There is the appraisal done by the county appraiser, and then there's the levying. It's levied in part by the city of Garden City, then the college, then the school district, and then whichever one I've left out.
County.
County. Among the things that the city of Garden City levies, property tax for a portion of those is for road maintenance. So, the, the road, or the, the properties along here presumably have been valued based on either being fronted onto a dirt road or, in your case, fronted on one side by a dirt road and one side by an asphalt road. I don't know what implications that has on the, on the property value if, if in Garden City in twenty-eighteen, whether the county appraiser's office changes the, the appraised value of the home, but I suspect they do. As to whose decision was it, when this property was developed, the developer had the opportunity to pave that road and chose not to. Subsequent owners of each of those properties inherits the property as it is. I, I don't know that the policy of the commission over the years or the practice of the commission over the years when they consider special assessment share on roads like twenty-three-hundred Ninth Street or seventeen-hundred A or one-hundred Santa Fe completely disagrees with what you're saying. The petition in front of the commission isn't requesting a hundred percent payment by the adjacent property owners. It isn't even considering a fifty-fifty split. It's considering seventy percent public at large and thirty percent shared by the adjacent property owners. Now, the commission will decide whether or not they think that's palatable or not. But I think that is maybe not in exact proportion to the way you'd like to see it, but impartial answer to your, you know, you know, I've been paying for roads in other places. Why doesn't people in other places help me pave for this road? Well, seventy percent of it is.
Right, I, I understand that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying that, that nobody else is paying for this road. I'm just saying that on my behalf.
Right.
You're going to be taking three hundred and seventy-eight dollars a year out of my pocket. Not only, not, not just that, but it, because I don't have three hundred and seventy-eight dollars to fork out to you every year, it's going to go onto my escrow, which shorts my escrow every year, which increases my outgo for my, my monthly payment for my house.
And I'm sure that's what will make this a difficult decision for the commission. The, also, roads aren't entirely paid for out of property tax. While this doesn't change the seventy-thirty public-private share, where the money comes from is only fractionally property tax. Majority of it's probably sales tax and other fees.
So, I guess I don't really have anything other, other than anything else to say other than I hope that you decide not to pave the road because I've lived there for twenty, for almost seven, eighteen years, and I'm happy the way it is. So, thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Anybody else? Please come forward and state your name.
Eric Souls. I own property on block A. I own lots six and five. I'm the one driving this petition. We started this petition over two years ago trying to get our road approved. I've worked with Caleb's staff, great staff to work with. I appreciate all the help they gave us. And my dad was approached over twenty-seven years ago about getting the road put in. At that time, the burden was on him to pay a hundred percent of it. Couldn't afford it. So, that's why we're asking for the seventy-thirty split. Sixty-eight point seven-five percent of the property owners approved the petition. So, I asked for your vote, a yes. Let's get the road in. Let's get the developed lots going. Let's get houses on them. It helps you guys out. It helps us out. Move forward. Any questions?
I have a question. So, amongst, I mean, I live in a neighborhood. I have neighbors. We have to make decisions together as a neighborhood about how to deal with things. What's been the discussion and how have you tried to work this out amongst yourselves?
Very good.
Why's that?
I did approach him at the beginning of the process. I was yelled at. How could you dare do this to us?
Well.
And I don't want to get into anything else, but we're trying to work it out.
I guess the dis.
Well, ma'am, excuse me, but it seems to me that the, the question is that we a portion, saying as a community, we think it's important to have improved roads, that we as a public will take on seventy percent of this cost with an improvement to all of your properties, and I recognize that some property owners own more or less. To your point, seventy percent of that cost would be very helpful to you. I understand that for some folks, they don't see the value in that. But this again comes down to the folks, there, there needs to be a little bit, I think, consensus about how to purchase, or we just follow the letter that, you know, the letter of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Which is not going to make folks happier.
You're not going to please everybody.
Right, and then it comes back to just the letter of the law, in my opinion. My understanding this, to summarize.
That's correct.
So, so the seventy, so the hundred percent that you indicated that your father would have borne the cost, so, so why the change here now they're offering, the city is now offering seventy percent of that cost? Is that what's driving your decision?
We asked the city what they were to offer, and the seventy-thirty was a going percentage, so we just asked for that. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I thought you got a question.
No?
It's unfortunate. I think that, you know, it would be nice to be able to come to consensus.
And this is a family. We're uncle cousins.
With this, you would be, you would be developing those lots, though, that are undeveloped, correct?
There's ten vacant lots.
You'd be selling those.
But you're the one that would be.
Nine out of the ten.
Nine out of the ten. Okay.
And she's been good enough to say something in a second.
Okay, but you've got ten of the lots there out of.
We have nine of them. Dad.
You have nine of the lots out of the, out of the sixteen. There's sixteen lots.
Sixteen lots. There's ten vacant lots.
And there's ten vacant lots, so you've got nine.
Dad and I, we have nine.
As for the ten vacant lot, I will say that is owned by my parents, and they do not have issues paying it on that lot because it will be developed. And we're just asking that the developers pay and the people that already have houses there that we don't pay. That's what we're asking, so they're not asking to be exempt on the one undeveloped lot that they do own. They are willing to pay.
You know, what we could do, Caleb? What if?
You might, if there's no more comments, you might close the public hearing.
Is there any other, is there any other comment from the audience or anybody present? None being? All, close the public hearing at this time? Okay, commissioner.
I'll just, I'll just throw something out here. You, you tell me. What if we take care of the people that are, already have existing homes and then pay, pay a little bit more than, than the seventy percent? Would that, how much would that be? I mean, they said.
We would, I would have.
Or make.
The issue is the boundaries. We would have to legally create the boundaries with the, the resolution, and I would, that'd be something I would, Randy and I would have to discuss.
Not pay any, I, I said that wrong. Not the seventy percent, but the thirty percent. Make Mr. Souls pay a little bit more, and the two people that have properties there wouldn't have to pay.
You can, you can decrease the size of the benefit district. You can't expand it.
That way, I mean, in other words, Mr. Souls can, he can add on a little bit more to the lots and get his money back, okay?
One of the things that have been discussed, if you, I know it's a start of the way out, which is the, the best option for this, and as Randy has said, you can change the boundaries, for example.
Just include the lots.
Example, cut out the lots that have actual houses on and that meet the current requirements as developed.
I think that would be a win-win situation.
And then that.
Because he can. Because he can get another hundred dollars or a thousand dollars a lot out of those lots. I mean, we- we've- we've got lots that are selling for thirty thousand dollars over on the east side of town now, you know?
And then at that point, the question then comes down to is, okay, should the- what should the split be if all of the lots are considered undeveloped?
Right.
And, you know, should that be, that's born a hundred percent by those, all those undeveloped lots? So it's then recouped by them in the sale of those lots, those individuals who buy those? So those are the kind of the questions you need to answer.
But those other properties will still seek the benefit of, yeah.
Or, I mean, at least they're going to on one side.
Yeah.
The short side.
The discussions began on the property, I think, talking about the- the undeveloped properties bearing the cost, that a hundred percent of a hundred, what is it, a hundred forty thousand, a hundred seventy thousand? Yeah, if you, those were divided equally over ten lots, that's not- that's not an extra hundred or an extra thousand, that's an extra seventeen thousand.
No, no, I'm not saying to do that.
But to- to, well, if we turn it into a, uh, the- the city's-
Thirty-five percent, maybe, he pays thirty-five percent instead of thirty.
And that does- that doesn't, uh, um, it doesn't compare with how the commission has treated residential development. We haven't borne, uh, seventy percent.
We're not paying anymore. We're not paying anymore.
Yeah, I think the interest, the- the thing is, we have to be equitable amongst all of them, I feel, this is my opinion. We need to be equitable, but I think it's to them to sort out maybe some of those issues internally as a neighborhood, I guess is what I would ask for, understanding there's different ways.
Yeah, he could- he could offer that, he could offer to pay if- if he could offer that on his own. But I- I think the thing that the danger with, um, changing what's been presented is then, I mean, you would be able to cut and slice, you know, slice things up. A lot of us, when we first bought homes in Garden City, paid specials, special taxes. And so, I mean, I mean, to pretend like this is something that's never happened, um, that's not true. So, I mean, and I'm- and I'm curious about the value. I- I appreciate that they've lived there a long time, don't plan on moving or the same way, but I'm wondering that- that it does actually improve the value of the property having an improved road with curb and guttering. And I mean, that, if it just makes mowing easier, just in nothing else. So I'm- I'm less inclined to be willing to, and I- I like the thing of, can the neighborhood work it out since Mr. Souls will be actually gaining some profit from the sale? I mean, if that's something he'd want to offer, that might be the olive branch, especially with family involved.
I- I think the only thing before the commission is- is the three alternatives. One being the governing body may not approve the district, and we can certainly do that. And they can certainly go back and- and work this out themselves. That's not our job to work it out for them. Because we wouldn't, we've been given what our options are. So as a body, I think if- if, what I'm hearing, you're not happy with- with the first one and two alternatives, and the only alternative we have is number three, to sit and just say, no, let them work it out and bring it back.
No, I was just, I guess I was looking at option two.
Yeah, but we, that's a racial that we can't sit here and figure out.
May I ask a question, though? But as I understand this, the statute says fifty-one percent of the real estate owners of the district. So essentially, the major-
They control.
That's the letter of the law that I was speaking of. Is that correct, Mr. Allen?
As far as the sufficiency of the petition.
The sufficiency of the petition, okay. And I'm just trying, I- again, I- I am making these points because I think it's important to be consistent and yet still try and help facilitate a middle ground, you know, to keep the family in the neighborhood. Um, but at the same time, be equitable, I think that's our job.
But Mr. Souls owns more than fifty-one percent himself.
Right, that's what I was pointing out.
Yeah, so he- he controls how it's gonna go.
So while you have a few folks speaking against, the majority of the property owners actually are for. So I guess I was trying to clarify that to Commissioner.
Yeah, but that's- that's not the weight by the law, really. We're looking at the number of pieces of property owned and there's sixteen pieces and they own the, he owns the bulk of them. And based on that, I don't think it's our job to try to sit here and negotiate some sort of a deal between the people, tell them to agree with this thing. So I think that, in my opinion, we should go with number three. Just- just don't approve the, uh, improvement district and allow them to work it out. And if they can come up with a confirmation, then- then I guess Mr. Souls will have to figure out a way to develop those properties and bill that all to the people that's gonna build, but I don't think it's our job.
Well, it probably won't be done. It probably won't be done. I mean, you get seventy percent of it paid by the city, I mean, you're not gonna find a better deal than that.
I don't disagree with that, but that's not the point we have.
I guess that's what we're trying to make the decision on here is governing body is one of those three options. You know, I agree with Commissioner Dale, it's not our, it's not the- it's not the governing body's role to try to make people get along. Our- our, and work their problems out. Our- our role as a governing body is to prove and set policy on one of these three options here.
So is there advantage to the city to improve this road at this time?
Valuation, if they build a house on it.
That's what we're here to determine on these three options.
If they build a house on it, it's gonna be appraised, it's gonna bring in property tax, so, yeah, there's advantages.
And certainly from a maintenance and a stormwater perspective, there'd be advantages to. We haven't spent the time or come up with all the assumptions necessary to figure- figure out what the cost-benefit ratio is in relationship to the hundred and twenty-four thousand. We'd have to pay upfront to meet the seventy percent match.
But Caleb, if a developer were to come to you now in an undeveloped area and want to put in housing project, one of the requir- requirements in the development agreement would be hard surface streets, correct? You wouldn't allow development of an area like this with a dirt road.
That is correct.
Nor would we share in seventy percent of the cost.
Correct, right.
Which goes back to the specials that you talked about.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That we, the governing body, approve the improvement district as proposed at seventy-thirty split.
There's been a motion to approve the improvement district as proposed at a seventy-thirty percent. Is there a second on that motion? There is no second on that motion, that motion fails. Is there another motion?
I'll make a potion on alternative three, the governing body may not approve the improved district.
Is there a second on that motion?
Which would be a- a motion to deny the resolution.
However, they could bring another. Is that correct? Another petition if they changed what they're amongst themselves? We deny this one, they bring another.
I would need a second on that to have further discussion.
They would have you through the process again.
Not a second.
There's been a second on that? Any other discussion or additional discussion? All in favor on that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, may?
Nay.
Four one vote. Thank you. All right, moving on to commission comments section. I think that's all of the business at hand, so we'll go to the comments section. Commissioner Finkhauser.
Let's make a comment about the pre-meeting, uh, the chat and the RHID. I thought that was good information and kind of bring us up to date where we are. The other question I had was, did TPNL ever plant their trees?
Yep.
Did they? Haven't been buying. Okay, so that's over with and good.
Looks pretty good out there, actually. I've been buying a couple of times.
I haven't- I haven't seen it, so, okay. And other than that, that's all I have.
Commissioner, Dale.
Yes. The pre-meeting was great, uh, I enjoyed that. It's- we get it every two years, but it's always impressive, Taylor, that, uh, Roddick Forester did an excellent job. Kudos to her, I understood it and probably will have to have a refresher in two more years. It was good, uh, good meeting today. Uh, I wanna thank my new colleagues today. It's quite obvious, so you took the time to- to delve into the agenda and research and really, it really helps to be prepared, and so thank you for taking that time. And- and I think we'll work together well as a group, I feel that. On, uh, this coming Saturday at, uh, I'm gonna- I'm gonna, no county officials here, right? At the Three I Building.
Exhibition.
There- there will be a- a ceremony that's going on for, to the Honor Flight, uh, people. The, uh, they'll be raising funds, chili feed, there'll be a car show, I'll have mine down there, you can vote for me. But all the proceeds will go to pay for Honor Flight veterans to go back to Washington DC. So help us raise some funds so we can send some more people there. Other than that, uh, that's all I have, man.
Commissioner Burns.
Well, I just wanna take the opportunity to thank everyone, city staff, um, Matt, Jennifer, and all of you for welcoming us to the commission. And it's- it's a wonderful opportunity and I'm very excited to be a part of it. And, uh, yes, the- the housing assessment, the chat that was presented was very useful. And I think there were so many, um, possibilities that came out of that. Uh, and I- I hope to continue to work in some of those areas. I think it is actually very exciting for our community.
Commissioner Renner.
So I also wanna thank, um, the- for the presentation. I, the thing that's really neat is being the gold standard, um, in the area, and so I think that's really nice to hear. And it just really speaks to the work you're doing, I mean, through your- your committee. I also just wanted to, um, I was able to attend, was invited to attend the, uh, Garden City Police Department, and I don't know what the official name of the event was. I called it the Policeman's Ball, but I know that's not correct.
I think it's their Christmas dinner, even though it's mid-January.
Yes, it was really great. Um, I did wanna just know, Bill Powers was awarded the Garden City Police Department's Employee of the Year, and so I think that was, he's done some really great work and I really appreciated, um, just the things that- that all of the officers are doing. It was neat to see some officers there ten and twenty years, and so that was really great. Had a really good time, the meal was exceptional. And, uh, I think the explorers program, I was really excited tonight, so thank you for the invitation and I really enjoyed that. I also wanna say thank you for the installation, um, I know that it has meant a lot to us. Um, I don't know if Lindsay was nervous, but I certainly was. And also having my family here, that was nerve-wracking, cause you never know how teenagers are going to act up or not. Um, whoever planned the after-party was very nice, thank you for that. Even though I didn't eat the cake, I appreciate the, uh, the fruit and the nuts. You shame me into not eating cake, so that was great. Um, and I just, again, I wanna say thank you to all the staff. And I know that you spent a lot of time and I- and I just, you're gonna spend a lot more helping us get up to speed and making sure that we are able to do a great job for our city. I appreciate our- our current, our commissioners who welcomed us on. And I'm excited about, um, the mayor taking it and doing lots of things, great things here in Garden City this year, so thank you.
Thank you. And finally, I'd like to welcome my, the new commissioners to the- to the bench. You guys made it through your first meeting and came out kinda unscathed, so. Good pre-meeting, like everybody said, I'd like to welcome Melissa and, um, Alicia to, um, our city staff and to the community, actually, from what I understand. So, uh, Melissa did an outstanding job today, um, doing the presentation, so, um, job well done. It's always great to see that our community's growing and we need more housing as our community grows. And, uh, we do have some challenges in that area, but, um, so do a lot of other communities that are around our area. I did too, uh, attend the Garden City Police Department, uh, Christmas, uh, party, as well as Commissioner Dale. A lot of good awards that were put out. One of the awards that was talked about, uh, and it was actually talked about this morning on the radio, um, by the city manager, was the driving award, um, talking about, um, you know, us purchasing the police units that we did through the lease agreement today, um, and, you know, how many miles you put on those and how we rotate through that and the fleet and everything. But it also was noted that, you know, we do provide awards for people that have excellent driving records. That's something that our city prides itself on, not only just for that, but the safety awards that we do quarterly. You know, we really work with our staff to try to keep our staff safe, or our sta- our staff safe and, you know, in working conditions. But it also, with these driving awards and the other awards that they were presented that evening, um, really shows that we take pride in who we are and what we do. And that helps us with our bottom line, you know, when you have excellent drivers and taking care of our vehicles and equipment, that lasts and it helps with the bottom line of our community. So congratulations to them. We have a super outstanding staff, as always, um, working, uh, hard for our community to make it great and where we're at. I wanted to congratulate Chief Utes on his award that he received. I'd like to thank, uh, my fellow commissioner for, um, putting me up to the task to present that to the chief. But, uh, congratulations to the chief and all he does. And, uh, not only for what he did during the event where we had a terrorist plot in our community and he reached out to those community members, uh, to help reassure them. But all the stuff that he does for our entire community, be out there and helping our community and making it safe. So thank you for all that you do in our community and all the police department, as well as, again, like I said, all of the staff members. On that note, if we don't have anything else, meeting's adjourned.